Pull this meeting to order. Chairman, would you please rise and salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Hey, Mrs. Fasette, we have a roll call vote.
Mr. Severnaro, Mrs. Fasette here. Mrs. Hartzell, Mr. McCullough?
Here.
Mr. Potts?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Shaheen?
Here.
Mr. Wodowski?
Here.
And Mr. Basil?
Here. Okay, under announcements, I've got a couple of things. One, so everyone knows this meeting is being recorded. Number two, on the agenda, item number 12, 3D, that number should be $1,374, not $819. It's not a shared position anymore. What else? We'll be having an executive session tonight after this meeting to discuss personnel negotiations in legal. At this time, there's procedures for public participation that are on the inside cover of the agendas that you have on the blue sheet. We will be following the three-minute rule. That's the board policy. I will give you a professional courtesy. I'll wave my three fingers when you're getting close to your three minutes, and when we hit it, that's it. No more comment at the microphone, okay? We all have to abide by that rule. Having said that, are there any presentations by the public on agenda items?
I'd just like to say, I'm David Glass from the Birdsboro Rotary Club. I just wanted to make sure the board knew that we were here, we have a check. Just let us know what numbers you crunched for the interact club. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and again, thank you guys so much for donating that money to help support that program. We truly appreciate it. Are there any other comments for the public? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to number seven, recognition for March.
Thank you, Mr. Basil. I'd like to take a little moment tonight to recognize, we had quite a few students participate in the art program. There was a little art show for this year, which has been a longstanding tradition in Daniel Boone. A number of those students have remained behind, and for the ones that have remained behind, I'm going to turn the podium over to Mrs. Trainer to do some recognition for all of their work.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Otto. Just for the members of the audience, the displays that are outside here have been traveling around the district since the early part of February, and if you have a number of students in the buildings, you may have seen them before, but what we've tried to do on an annual basis, a little bit different than the spring art show at the high school, is to find students from K to 12 and just highlight artwork from every building and as many grades as we can touch. This year, out there on those displays, there's 160 students represented, and as you may have seen when you came in here tonight, the art teachers chose to also recognize those students by having a small reception for them prior to this meeting. The original intent was that we had hoped all 160 students would come, and we were going to read their names for recognition. As you see in the audience, there are less than that, so I'm going to ask the artists that are among us tonight, if you would come up to the podium and actually let the board know who you are, so they know that you are here, and so I will make sure you can reach this podium. So if you just give me a couple of minutes, instead of reading all those names and we're trying to figure out the probably 25 to 30 here, any of my artists that are among us, come on up? Shy artists that we might not know. Come here. Please tell them, I don't know what grade you're in.
Ally, third grade.
And what building?
Elementary and intermediate center.
Thank you.
Carter Adams in second grade. At APC.
Griffin Adams, fifth grade, AIC.
Serena Holika, eighth grade, in Daniel Boone Middle School.
Melanie Cleary, sixth grade, in Daniel Boone Middle School.
Sierra Whitney, fourth grade, in the intermediate center.
Elizabeth Levy, ninth grade.
Ave Bush, fourth grade, AIC.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, moving on to routine approvals. It's recommended the board directors approve the minutes of the February 8th, February 14th, and February 28th meetings. We have a roll call vote.
I have a first made by Mr. McCullough, a second by Mr. Potts.
No, Mr. Shaheen.
Mr. Shaheen.
Oh, okay. Mrs. Fasette, yes? Mr. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Wodowski?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion approved.
It's also recommended the board directors accept the following financial reports, as well as approved payments and bills for the month of March. Do I have a motion? Items B and C. So move.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
I have a first made by Mr. Shaheen, a second by Mr. Ross. Mr. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Wodowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Fasette, yes? Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, presentations by board members. I need the secretary of correspondence.
I just want to make note that via email, I forwarded on to the correspondence from our guidance department regarding the budget.
Good to receive that. Berks County Intermediate Unit, Ms. Hartzell is not here.
She has forwarded her copy station.
And she has forwarded copies there in the lumber. Berks Career and Technology Board Report. I think that was my job last week. Unfortunately, I got caught up in Philadelphia and did not make the meeting, so my apologies on that one. But I believe everyone got the JOC briefs sent to them via email. Next one, student government, is going to be in May, and legislative report. Mr. Shaheen?
Yes. There were a number of things over the last couple of weeks that hit. One of them in particular is Mr. Raftery's bill number 537, which if passed, and they're talking about getting it passed by the time we have to vote on a budget, is that they're going to require a two-thirds vote for budget to be able to be passed at the board level. And the other bill was one that's being brought in that will allow districts to remove personnel based upon performance and not tenure, not first-in-last-type of criteria, and that one's getting a great deal of steam under its sails right now also.
That was a package of...
Right. There were mandated relief, I mean, there were a number of them. There's probably 15 of them on here, anywhere from the point that getting relief from non-mandated, non-funded mandated programs to not being able to have to provide reports to the state when the amount of money the state gives in basic education is lower than the prior year, you're not going to have to put those reports together. I mean, there were a number of things you're looking to help reduce the stress and financial impact on the districts of lowering your basic education amounts.
Right.
It's almost like foreshadowing what may be coming in the upcoming years if they're already looking at ways to help relieving you, that we may be expecting similar next year as far as funding, because they're not flatlining.
And my understanding is that the Senate and the House are supposed to vote on that come April 5th?
A lot of these are supposed to be voted on, like I said, prior to the month of June.
Right. So do we have those up on the website or anywhere? That list?
It's been in both Reading and Pottstown paper. There's emails coming both from the state and outside groups and concerns all over. I mean, they are out there. We could possibly publish it, put it on the website if we needed to, but they're out there.
I just wasn't sure if folks were interested in finding out what that package of bills entailed, whether we should put that on the website or not. Anybody have any issues for that?
In the meantime, we should have that up as soon as tomorrow, but if you'd be so inclined to want to go home this evening, I think there are a number of websites that you could probably access. Business managers have a state association called, correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Penns, I think it's pasbo.org. So P-A-S-B-O.org, if you dial that in, or dial it in, listen to me, if you punch that into your computer, you can probably, you know, see those this evening with some detailed explanations as to what they would actually relieve us from having to do.
Any other comments? Any other reports? Okay, seeing none. Buildings around? Nothing, okay. Financial approvals. Do I have a motion for any or all?
Eleven, A through E.
A through E.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
I have a first made by Mr. Shaheen, a second by Mr. Ross. Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Wodowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Fasette, yes? Mr. McCullough?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, moving on to number 12. Do I have a motion for any or all items A through E?
A through E, including the corrections.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call.
Again, I have a first made by Mr. Shaheen, a second by Mr. Ross. Roll call. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Wodowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Fasette, yes? Mr. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, moving on to 13 programs. Recommended the board directors set the 2011 graduation date for Friday, June 10th, 2011, or the rain date on the 13th. So move. Second. Any discussion? Seeing none?
I have a first made by Mr. Shaheen, a second by Mr. Potts. Roll call. Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Wodowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Fasette, yes? Mr. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, moving on to 14 policies. A, it's recommended the board directors approve revised policy number 114, extracurricular, co-curricular activities and athletics. So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. I just need to get my notes. We have spent a lot of time discussing this policy, and I have to say, I'm still struggling with it, because the policy we set here is going to have a future impact on the district. When we first started the discussion, we were in a different economic time, so I've gone back to and talked to people that have always been involved in the program, and specifically, this really impacts in our music program, because it's choir and band. So I've gone back to people and I said, okay, you know, what do you think the focus of music at Daniel Boone should be? And they say, well, look towards your curriculum. And I've talked to music educators, et cetera, and it comes down to music, we're here for music education. So then I started reading the Pennsylvania Standards, and I have them copied here, and I'm sure you all can reference them. And the standards, we all can agree that music education and the fine arts is very important, but it's the, and I'm going to read, 9.1 is the standard, production, performance, and exhibition, a dance, music, theater, and the visual arts. And then you go into the music specifically, and it talks about the importance of learning to sing and listen and appreciate music and play an instrument and read music, et cetera. And I kept reading it and reading it, and then I even went into the Pennsylvania Music Educators, and right there, they had a very extensive website on music curriculum. They had a curriculum model for the state of Pennsylvania. And as I kept reading this, I'm thinking, okay, why are we having an issue with this? Because we all agree music education's important. And then I realized, it's not so much that we're debating whether bands should be graded course, it's the extent of what it should be graded on. And I know it might not be popular, but traditionally, marching band, concert band was there to have a chorus during the day, and then to do their concerts during the school year, and community-based events, because the community does expect the band to perform at the parades. That's just, you know, the community, that's how they support our perk, and we in turn have to support them. But while I'm reading all this, I'm thinking, nowhere does it say that we have to have a competition band? You know, and we've already cut marching band going to away sporting events, we've already cut field trips in other curricular areas, but we're not touching this area. So when we look at this co-curricular policy, it does say to grade for things beyond the school day, and that would be year two concerts a year, that would be the performance piece, but I'm very hesitant to approve the policy if it means that we're going to continue a competition band without being able to, I think that the competition band needs to be extracurricular and treated like any other extracurricular, because it is beyond what's needed for, to meet the educational music curriculum. Music, the fine arts, the way we're going to be treating fine arts is going to be different, and we need to realize that we need to stay standard-based, and it's appreciation and teaching the subject area, not the competing. And that's all I have to say. So.
Any other comments?
It's really, I've struggled with it, and I've gone out to people, and they say, keep going back to your music education, you're there to teach music. And everybody wants to keep the band. I mean, the band is a vital part of our community, it always has been. It's a question of how extensive should they be paying for it, or should it be passed on? Like, we're talking about clubs being passed on. I mean, there are some things that have always been dear to this community that we're coming out of creative ways of how to fund them, so that we can keep them, so. So I don't know if that muddies the water, because I know we approved a course selection guide, and at this point, the course selection guide says, as within the handbook, and in the handbook, it talks about things beyond the concerts, but...
I can comment at least on that part of it. Whatever direction the board chooses to go, I wouldn't say that the course selection guide would be a roadblock for you. We can work around that based on whatever decision you may make. It's published, I mean, but it can certainly be redacted, edited, and restated, so from that standpoint, it's still part of the conversation.
And kind of some board members?
Well, I guess I'd just like to comment that we have been around this for a long time. We talked about this at the board at multiple meetings. We addressed this at the curriculum committee, which came forth with a strong recommendation to approve this, this policy. We talked to the educators, we talked to people in the music department, we talked to the principal of the high school, who strongly supported that this is the way to go as far as this is concerned, to be able to properly do the program as we have it structured. So I think we should pass this policy and move on. We've been discussing this, it seems like forever at this point in time, but I think that it was a strong consensus to move ahead with this policy, and that's why I certainly like to see us do it.
I will agree, it seems like we're going backwards on this whole policy. We had long discussions on this. I really hate to see us going back and feuding over this again.
Well, I don't know, I mean, for me personally, I'm just wondering whether it's just the issue of that one aspect of it, the competitions, and perhaps we're better served just in having competitions as an extracurricular activity, whereas the rest of the program stays a co-curricular activity.
Well, Mr. McAdams did state that we do need it graded, keep this graded.
And his opinion?
For, to have success in this program.
There's also the opinion of the principal of the high schools, I recall. Who came out very strongly and supported this.
I know there have been, and I've talked countywide, other school districts do have competition bands, but they limit the number of competitions, they limit that it has to be within an hour radius. There are other ways of doing it and scaled back. I know Governor Mifflin last, a few years ago, they tapped head on and said, no more than three competitions, and they have to be within an hour radius. I'm going to come back to, we've cut field trips on curricular areas, but yet we're having another curricular area go to how many competitions, you know, which are considered a field trip, because you're riding a bus and you're going, you know? Since I've been in the Daniel Boone area and have, before I got on the board, I came to board meetings, so I probably have been coming to 19 years of board meetings in one way or another, and we've gone through four instrumental directors, and with every change, you have a new vision for the program, which is good. Change and vision is good, but I think we, as a district, need to sit back and say, based on the standards and based on our curriculum, what is best for Daniel Boone and our students, and not so much what is the vision of the moment, because we've had four. So, and we have a great program, but let's not, let's not pull any punches. If it stays this way, there's a good chance we're going to have to be eliminating it and reducing it, because the budget's not pretty, and next year doesn't look any prettier. So.
I think we're all trying to work within our means with this budget. Going to the band, I think there's going to be areas there that obviously everyone's going to have to work with a number, if that means moving to curtail some of the competitions. I'd rather see it curtailed than losing. You're talking 10% of the school population of 120. I think that's going to be a big impact for those kids. I mean, I have one coming up through the ranks, and I'd really like to see him be able to participate. What an experience. I gotta say, with my older son, who went through that four years, they went through blood, sweat, and tears, and that was a great, great experience.
And do you think he would have gone it if he didn't have to be graded for it?
Yes.
He would have still gone?
I believe he would have, but he enjoyed knowing at the end of the year that it's a program that you could take on with you to college, and obviously, that great attachment is a key also.
But he'd still have the grade for the marching band concert band, it's just the competition band wouldn't be?
Well, the competition is another key role that I believe needs to stay in the program. I really do.
I think, what I took from Mrs. Fasette is that she's trying to save that piece rather than cut it, because if we have to cut expenses and we can't charge an extracurricular fee, and we have to cut something, you're not going to cut your marching band class, you're not going to cut your concerts, you're not going to cut your performing for the football game, I wouldn't think, so what does that leave? What is the expense? The competition costs, I would assume, to enter the competition and the transportation fees. So I think she's actually looking at it to save the program rather than cut parts of the program, is what I took from that.
Exactly. I'd rather see this stay the way it's drafted, but I think we need to go back. Obviously, we have a great institution in Daniel Boone, Music Boosters, who support this program wholeheartedly, and I think, obviously, they're putting funds in there every year, and they're going to also help do whatever they can to keep that.
But are we talking about, we're not talking about elimination of the program, we're just talking about what parts of the program are graded, what parts of the program are not graded, right?
Well, I mean, we went through this where we'd like to really keep that graded part for competition. We really need to keep that.
Does anybody know how much that part costs us?
I don't think this has anything to do with cost. This is a policy about creating something as a co-curricular activity, which we've been through this discussion.
Correct.
Multiple times at the board level. We addressed it at great deal length at the curriculum committee. We discussed with both the people who are in the music program, who understand what the repercussions are of this, they gave us a strong recommendation. We talked to the high school principal, who gave us a strong recommendation. The curriculum committee came back to this board with a strong recommendation and met with the solicitor to get the draft of this so it would comply.
I agree with that. That was under different economic times.
This isn't a...
I think understandings of certain things, too.
This isn't, this is a policy on how we run the program. It has nothing to do directly with the budget. If in the future year, this board chooses to cut certain budgetary areas, they're going to have to make those decisions, but this is about grading of a class. We've already heard from the educational people that this is the right thing to do, so I think we should move forward with this.
I just want to make a point.
Go ahead.
We, when we're talking about cutting basic skills and having elementary students go on from elementary school with not having the necessary math and reading skills, I think it's very important to be talking about whether we have a competitive ban and the cost involved, because we are making very difficult decisions on budget.
And that's something that we're talking about budget, but this is about policy.
But this has an impact.
You won't need a policy to grade competition if there isn't a competition. To go...
But the two are different topics. You're missing, actually, this, here we're talking about the program, about what? About the way the students are graded for the work that they're doing outside of the classroom, outside of the normal school day.
But did you just hear what Mrs. Wodowski said, and that's the reality?
I think my concern, too, is, from what I heard as a board member, was the whole reason why grade was even introduced was to get the program up and running as part of the competition, but now that you have an ongoing program, you have kids out there sweating and working hard during the curriculum, the regular curriculum hours of the day, it doesn't seem to make sense to me that they're going to forego going to a competition because it's not graded. I mean, that's the reward, it's the gain.
And I agree with you, I have a son in band, he doesn't do it for the, he doesn't do it for what? The credit. He does it because he wants to do it. I can't imagine that you get, I don't even know what you get for a one-year band, but you're going to do all that training and all that nightly practice and all those competitions for, and all the hours and hours of practice. They don't do it for the credit. They do it for the love of band and music. So I don't believe, but if you take away the credit, or whatever they get, that the students are going to start to drop out. I don't believe that.
But let's go back to why we're here in the first place. We identified that our current practice is not in agreement with one of our policies. The reason we're revising this policy is to bring our current policy into conformity with what we're already doing and what we've been doing for many years under this program. It was identified that this is an area in which we were not operating according to our current policy, and this language is changing our policy to match our current situation in terms of what our current practice and what the practice has been for many, many years in this district, and that's what this is about. Now, budget is a whole other matter. This, this has nothing to do with budget. If we as a board choose to cut this or any other program, that'll be part of the budget discussion, but this is about correcting our policy to bring it into compliance with what our current practice is. And I'd really like to move forward with this, because we've been around this debate too many times. It's time to move on.
I agree, and it is a curricular decision, and I'm going to, again, state, if you read the standards, Pennsylvania and national, nowhere in the standards does it talk about competition. It talks about music education. This is a program, decision, policy on music education and where we're going with it. We want to keep the fine arts.
And, well, if your practice doesn't meet your policy, you can do two things. You can change the policy or change the practice. So we could change the practice to meet the policy as well.
We could, and I might remind you that we've been through this, we had many sessions in which we discussed, we brought in the people who are involved in this, and they all told us that this is the right way to go. We talked to the people from the music department who were in the knowledge, who actually work with these students on a daily basis. We talked to the principal from the high school, who strongly recommended moving forward with this.
Is there a recommendation to either amend the policy as written or to move forward with a vote?
Well, there's only a motion, motions are on the table.
Yeah, I'm just saying, if there's, if there's nothing, then we're just stating our opinions. Is anybody else, any other comment? Call of question? Okay, we have a call of question.
Do we need a second on that?
Technically, you're supposed to second vote on the call of question to close debate. We'll give this, I think, the last meeting. So you need a second on that and then a vote to call a question.
Is there a second on the call?
And there's a vote without any further discussion.
Okay, so roll call vote, and I'm calling the question.
Okay, this, I have a first made by Mr. Ross, a second by Mr. Potts, and the vote is for calling the question. Ms. Wodowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Fasette, yes? Mr. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Okay, now we will proceed immediately onto the vote for the policy. And that was made by, the first was made by Mr. Ross, the second was made by Mr. Shaheen. Mrs. Fasette, no. No. Mr. McCullough?
No.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Ms. Twodowsky?
No.
And Mr. Basil?
No.
We have a 4-3 vote. I don't know what school code is.
It doesn't count. I think we need to say, we would need a majority.
Motion do not count.
Before I'm done, a motion do not count.
Mr. Basil, therefore then, the policy as written previously stays in place, correct? This was a modification of that policy?
That would be correct until it's...
Which makes our, our program that we currently have in place in non-compliance with what we're trying to do.
Correct.
Okay. What does that mean for us?
That the policy should be revisited and brought back to the board, you know, or else a direction given to the administration to revise the practice to be in accordance with...
Because we currently have a, a program, a course, that we are teaching at the high school level that is in non-compliance of policy.
That, to the extent that it requires participation in these after-school, if these are graded, that's correct, yes.
We have multiple classes.
Correct. At all levels.
At all levels.
And this has been going on for years? So, okay. All right, moving on to 14B, the first reading acknowledgement of policy number 914, school volunteers. And C, the first reading acknowledgement of administrative guideline number 909, extracurricular volunteer. Moving on to 15, transportation.
Yes, Mr. Basil. The Transportation Committee met with both of our transportation partners last week, and we were able to come back with a couple of savings. So we'd like to outline here so that we can make note of. They sat down and scrutinized the current bus routes a little closer, knowing what's going on. And we are going to be able to remove two buses from next year's schedule at a savings of approximately $35,000 a bus. So there's about $70,000 savings into the budget for that. They took it upon themselves also to go back to the state, they got outside the box here. There's currently 1,212 students that we get no reimbursement for from the state because they live within that envelope of, I believe it's two miles from the school. They went back and had several roads and routes classified as hazardous. Therefore, we are allowed to get a 50% reimbursement. They did the analysis of that, submitted the analysis and the study to the state, and the state agreed that there are hazardous routes. They estimate that will be an additional source of revenue to the district for approximately $66,000. So between the two, it's about a $136,000, $140,000 good guide to the budget for us. And they're still looking at several other things. I previously mentioned that with the work with Mrs. Trainer, that we probably should, and it's a strong recommendation from several of us, that we should be offering midday transportation for the kindergarten. They were able to work it out where they'll be able to use the same set of buses to pick up and deliver as well as take back home, cutting that $54,000, $55,000 expenditure down into the $24,000, $25,000 range for us.
And my request was, there's going to probably be another transportation meeting between now and...
Correct. They were looking at a few other things. I need to talk to Mr. Supers on the side about advertising on the insides of buses. We can't do it on the outside, can we do it on the inside? And another, a number of other things. There are a number of things that we would like to do, that we could not do just based upon laws and rules and regulations. But there's a number of other things that we're going back to them on and some of the things they'd ask us for some help on, as far as being able to use a greater number of older buses and that kind of thing, so.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Shaheen? Okay, seeing none, moving on. Old business, discussion of mid-strategic plan. Turning that over to me, yeah?
Based on discussion from the board and regarding the report, as I indicated you in your board update, we would need your feedback on reconvening the steering committee. I've had Mrs. Trainer, I would ask her to come to the podium and give a brief explanation and feel any questions that you might have about that process. Mrs. Trainer, if you would be so kind?
I guess the first question I have, everybody get a chance to go through the mid-strategic report that was put out. I mean, I sat on the committee with a couple of the board members, and I guess my concern, oh, I stated it at the last meeting, I'll state it again here, it just didn't seem to me that this reflected the economic reality that the school district was in last year or this year and probably again next year, maybe even the year after that. So, having said that, this doesn't seem to be much of a guide or strategic plan that the board could implement and, and use going forward. So that, that's my concern as a board member. And, you know, obviously, Mrs. Trainer, if you could sort of talk to us about what procedure would be if we have to revisit this with the committee, that would be helpful.
Well, just let me, for our point of clarification, those were suggestions to be considered in 2014, which would go into effect in the 2015, 16 school year. So they were only, at least from my perception of what the board, of what the committee was talking about, were things they didn't want to get lost in the next three years before they or a new committee would be convened to do our next strategic plan. So they were not immediate suggestions because their understanding, which is correct, is just that they are offering perceptions of the future and, as I mentioned a couple minutes ago, just things they want to go on record endorsing for the new committee that would come into play somewhere in the 13, 14 school year. To answer your question, Mr. Basil, I would be happy if that's the choice of the board to send a letter out to the current committee and ask them to come back. There are three members of the board on the committee so that you could share your sentiments as far as the way that they had brought forth some recommendations. And it could be reworded, they could alter what their suggestions are, it's, it's your choice.
I mean, I'm looking for some opinion from some of the other fellow board members here. I mean, my, my issue, I guess, was, you know, what are lessons learned from the budget situation that we were in last year, this year and probably going forward? And we seem to have a lot of constraints that are placed on us in terms of our curriculum and having to meet the requirements of our strategic plan that have been submitted to the PDE. And then we have to go back to PDE, ask them to remove those restrictions from us should we need it. And so it's almost as if we're handcuffing ourselves going forward. And, and I, you know, I think we always should, our expectation should always be to strive for the best in, in terms of our programming and everything else. But we also have to ground ourselves in terms of the reality, which is we may not be able to afford the programming that we're suggesting. And so for me, I, you know, I'm looking at the suggestions and saying, raise our requirements and add more programming and things of that nature, which in an ideal world makes a lot of sense when your revenues are going up every year. Our revenues have been flat for the last two years and actually decreasing. So going forward, who knows when the next recession is? These things are cyclical events. I hate to be in a position in four years or five years where...
I think more to the point though is that there are a number of things in there, forget adding to the current program, there are a number of things that this board took out last year, and this board is projecting to take out of this year that are in that plan as far as adding back in. So we forget adding, you know, additional electives to the high school or adding the requirement of an extra two points or extra two elective credits or something. There's things that we've removed. And if we're recommending putting them back into the, the strategic plan, I, I think we're just putting a document together that doesn't, isn't reality. And, and either will bring us into a situation where we need to either attempt to fund them or have to go through this entire process again of, of putting a document together that just isn't, isn't based on any type of fact.
Whichever you choose, I'd be very happy to, you'll be able to speak to the concerns of the board because there are three of you on the committee. I'd be happy to select a date that's convenient for those of you and the district and bring them back together if that was your choice.
When do we have to do this by?
That has to be in by the end of the summer. And so for the group, I would probably look to do that sometime after Easter because between now and Easter with PSSA and a number of other things. And so that would give us the meeting in April and then coming back to you either in May or June with the document.
I'm thinking maybe even pushing it off past the budget cycle. As a board member, I just see the next 60 days getting kind of frantic here for us.
It would just be difficult to get that committee together in the summer. And it's got to be to, it's got to leave here for PDE at the end of August. So it's your choice.
Mrs. Trainer, does this fall into one of the, the areas of, in the Senate bills where they're talking about not requiring us to have to submit reports on a year where the mandated funds are down? Or is this falling outside of that window?
I did not see the mid-strategic plan report as part of that list.
I don't think so.
I just wish we'll think of that.
The other two board members are on the committee with me. What do you guys think?
Well, I'd like to know what the impact's going to be when this, this rolls out. Is this going to increase our expenses?
I'm sorry to hear your question.
Will this increase our expenses from what we agreed or what we're suggesting within this?
I think Mrs. Trainer's point was this is a recommendation to the board for when the strategic plan ends in, in two years, what we should or shouldn't be doing in terms of the strategic plan going forward and when we submit the PDE. And it's, the board can disregard those suggestions when that time comes, I suppose.
Correct. This is only, in the bigger picture, are we on track? Is the mission what we believe in? Are we doing what we said as our vision for students? And then, you know, what are some suggestions you'd like to leave with the board for three years from now? That's, that's basically what a review of, you know, if we were far off from the mission statement and the belief system that we put in place three years ago, you would want to try and offer some concrete suggestions in the, in the immediate. But the report that I gave you was, at least my take, suggestions just to consider in 13, 14, when you convene a new committee. And also to complement a series of efforts the board and the district has made to offer students a program, and you can read through some of those commendations.
But, but the state's not going to come back and, and look at the recommendations and then compare that to the strategic plan we put together in those years and say, wait a second, you're nowhere near what you say you wanted to recommend?
No, they don't, that, that doesn't go into their system, what you have. It will be a whole new plan that will be developed outside, they don't compare one plan to another.
Then can I ask a, a real, far out, why the hell are we even putting this thing together if it bears no impact on the strategic plan moving forward? We're wasting a lot of people's times and efforts and if it, if it means nothing. I mean, it's what we'd like, but it has nothing to do with the plan we're going to put together?
Is this more a wish list?
Yeah, that's what it looks like. It's a wish list that we don't have to follow.
It's a vision, it's not binding.
It's a regulation. That's part of every six years you put a strategic plan...
Again, another one of these, these non-funded mandates that put us together.
The requirement is basically to submit a plan.
Yeah.
And many, just from my experience with a number of districts, the strategic plans being what they are, there are sometimes realities that we're subject to and the strategic plan goals don't get met. And there's no real consequence for that.
I just see it as another example of busy work that, that goes nowhere, so.
I'm just curious, I mean, the strategic plan, these suggestions are going to be around for the next group of people. And I, my concern is that everyone has short memories and it may be a different group of people sitting on that committee in two years or whatever the case may be. And if they're looking at what was provided to us and they say, oh, we should add this and we should add that, we should add the other thing, you know, that may not reflect the, the reality and the experience that the rest of us have been through in the last two years or the preceding three years.
Just not to get too legalistic with this, but if you look at Chapter 4 State Board Regulations, embedded in Chapter 4 is a district's requirement to submit a strategic plan. We're on a cycle to do that, it's an every-five-year cycle. Included in that strategic plan is a special ed strategic plan, a technology strategic plan, et cetera, et cetera. So do we have to meet that requirement? Does what we put in writing necessarily handcuff us to a particular thing? Not necessarily.
For example, if I go back to the curriculum committee, one of the conversations we had in the fall was the possibility down the road of looking at an alternative for those who participate in sports, whether it's lifetime or team sports, to be able to opt out of a phys ed class. And we played with some models that are out there in their junior and senior year. And so in a conversation with Mr. Shaheen, he asked me to bring that to the mid-strategic plan committee just to endorse it for consideration at the next strategic plan. We did nothing to tell you to put it in place other than say, we think it's a nice idea and we agree it should be looked at. So that's sort of what you can glean from the entire report, are things that, you know, you asked us to look at what we're doing and the possibility of some things down the road and here's some ideas. And it's, it is just, it is a requirement every three years of a six-year cycle from the Department of Education to bring that group back together.
Is there any way we can add language that states if there's level funding with estimated cost of living adjustments in the index?
You can accept it that way.
Can we do something like that, saying, you know, if the budget will support this, this is what we would like to do?
You would, you would support the right, you can pass that as part of the way you accept it? Absolutely.
But could we actually have it written in so that the next generation reading this says, oh gee?
Well, if I do that, I need to bring the committee back, only because that, that's not my document, that's what they had proposed and accepted.
See, one of the other things that's important for the board to keep in mind is the strategic planning process, the board's involvement in that is part of a, a committee of parents, students, administrators. We pick a strategic planning team. That's, that's embedded in the code. We don't really have a choice. You have to make it a collaborative process and have all of those parties involved in what finally comes forward.
But somehow you need to communicate the history of what's going on because part of the current strategic plan, we implemented, and now this year we're taking it away. So you don't want in three years them re-remending the wheel and saying, okay, we're going to put this back in place, and then realize that they're going to have to take it away in a year or two. Because the budget can't be covered, so how do we communicate that?
But I think all she's saying is, is we've got to get the other, like even the students may need to be having, everybody that's on that committee needs to be a part of that process.
One of the things, if the board would like at least sort of a, a half step before you reconvene the committee, I could certainly send a copy of wording that speaks to that along with, I won't say a ballot, but a letter out to each member that would they be willing to accept this or would they prefer to reconvene the committee? And if people understand that and just say, that's fine, and I get the responses back, I can come back to you next month, otherwise then we can bring the group back together in May. I'd be happy to do that if that would be...
That might be a compromise.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Sure, I'd be happy to, and then I'll report back in, in April.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Right, so, new business. Anything on our new business? Seeing none? Okay, presentations by the public on issues? All right, seeing no comment, I have a motion to adjourn. Okay, so move, this meeting adjourned.